I'd like to call the June the 5th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Our first order of business, of course, is have Mr. Cotton give the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless all those who have gathered here this evening. Lord, be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberations and grant them knowledge and guidance as they look upon the responsibilities that are before them. Guide them as they make decisions for the betterment of Onslow County and her citizens. Father, we give thanks for our 2017 high school and college graduates. We pray you give them direction, purpose, and perseverance as they enter the next phase of their lives. Grant them success for their efforts at every turn and guide them to follow your ways. We pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Would you lead us in pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Our elected officials would be Sheriff Miller. Thank you, sir, for being here tonight in support of our meeting and carry on the order. We ask that all the folks in attendance, please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items for this particular meeting. Second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not to one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or promote a candidacy shall not be allowed or permitted. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' period at the end of the agenda. With all other, with no other items being considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agenda is in order. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second action would be approval of the items on the consent agenda. Is there any member wants to pull anything from the consent agenda for later consideration? Please note that and let us know now.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Need a second.
Second.
All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Section three is public comment section. Mr. Cotton, did anyone sign up?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Item four is a public hearing, and Mr. Cotton will conduct that public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I will call on Mr. Ben Warren, our Planning and Development Director, to provide a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. For your consideration this evening, we have rezoning case P R E Z 2017-00004. And to give you a little bit of background information on the rezoning request, the property owner is Kathleen Schrum, and the applicant is Melissa Keeps from Century 21 Realty. The requested change is to rezone the property from rural agricultural to highway business, and the parcel was 321-107. This property contains approximately .42 acres, and in staff's analysis, there were no environmental concerns or issues identified on the property. Utilities are available. Both water and sewer will be provided by Unwassa and are available to the site, and fire service will be provided by Rose Town Fire Department, which has an ISO rating of seven. The property does have franchise on Richlands Highway, which has an average annual daily traffic count of 26,000 vehicle trips per day, and the carrying capacity of Richlands Highway is approximately 30,000 vehicle trips per day. As we take a look at the site, it's located about a tenth of a mile north of the intersection of Richlands Highway and Wells Road. And as we look at the surrounding zoning, pretty much everything in the general vicinity consists of RA zoning and highway business. And one thing to note, as we'll get into in just a minute with the comprehensive plan, is that the area is really starting to develop into a commercial node around this intersection of Wells Road and Richlands Highway. Historically, a lot of Richlands Highway has remained residential because up until a year or so ago, there was no access to sewer. But now that sewers come online, we're starting to see more of these types of rezonings and development of commercial nodes along the corridor. If you take a look at the aerial, you can see the property is currently in a wooded state. Across the, of Richlands Highway, we have some existing single-family residential and then directly adjacent to the north. You can kind of see the shadows there of an existing billboard sign, and then we have a commercial lot. And here's a look of the, at the commercial lot. We do have a manufactured home on site, but primary use is an old gas station, which has been used for several different uses over the last few years, ranging from a nightclub to a restaurant or bar and grill type use. And here's a look at one of the single-family residences directly across from the rezoning Comparing the two districts, the RA district was primarily intended for rural residential and maintaining agricultural-type uses. Over time, it's kind of morphed into something that's more or less a hybrid of a residential and commercial-type district. I think there's about 75 different non-residential and office-type uses that are allowed to try to provide services in the more rural areas of the county. Compared to the highway business district, which is really designed for commercial-type uses along primary transportation corridors throughout the county, so the rezoning request is in line with the underlying requirements or intent for the highway business district. Looking at the land use plan, as I mentioned, there historically has been no sewer available along Richlands Highway, and as such, most of the corridor on the future land use map was designated as residential. However, recognizing that the comprehensive plan is a fluid document, there's a lot of underlying policies and principles contained in the document that, as things change, it may not reflect what's in the land use plan. Those policies are really what help guide and direct growth. And as you look at those policies, what it really states is that along primary corridors, you would have pockets of commercial growth, such as what we're seeing here with the development of a commercial node. So looking at the comprehensive plan, the proposed rezoning would be considered consistent with the guiding principles of the comprehensive plan. It would also be considered reasonable and in the public's interest based upon the proximity of other commercial uses and commercial zoning in the immediate vicinity of the rezoning site. And based off of that, staff does provide a recommendation of approval based on consistency with the comprehensive plan and the existing highway business zoning, and the planning board also made a unanimous recommendation for approval based along, based upon those same factors. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Cotton for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I will now open the public hearing. No one has signed up. I will make one call to the audience. If anyone would like to speak on rezoning case P R E Z 2017-00004, please step forward. Seeing no one approach the podium, I will now close the public hearing, and the item is available for the Board's consideration.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I just have one question. Mr. Warren, did anyone, when you sent out the letters for, at the surrounding property owners, did anybody show up to the meeting in opposition to the request?
No, sir. We've had no phone calls, and we also had no one in attendance at the planning board meeting.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
No other, no other questions or concerns? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 159, Act 12, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners shall hold a public hearing on the proposed budget prior to its adoption. All required notices have been given. Citizens have an opportunity to address the Board for no more than five minutes per speaker on the topic of the proposed 2017-2018 Onslow County budget. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and no one has signed up. I will make one call to the audience. If anyone would like to approach the podium and speak on the proposed 2017-2018 budget?
I don't know if this is the time you're looking for. I'm a Onslow County Coordinator, and we'd like for the Sheriff's Department to have more manpower. Is that Mr. Tom for that?
I would think so. That's a budgetary consideration. So if you would, state your name and your address, please.
Sorry, I'm a little late. I do home daycare for teachers' kids, and there's always the one kid that's going to be late. So anyway, I'm Carol Pegram, and I'm a taxpayer of Onslow County, and I'm happy to meet all you guys finally, well, I know one of you. But anyway, I'm one of three coordinators for Fox Chase Neighborhood Community Watch. We are the largest community watch in Onslow County, probably the state. We have 691 homes. Most neighborhood watches have only 50. And the two times that I've had to call for assistance from a sheriff, they've had to come from other areas to get to us, and it hasn't been an emergency, so I'm not saying anything about the response time at all. But one of the things we'd like is to have two officers for the area on the, that would be in the, that would know the area. The one time I called, we had a theft, and the gentleman had to come from Piney Green, and the officer had to come from Piney Green. And then the other time, was just last week, I had an "Are you okay?" check from a resident and/or a neighbor to check on a resident, and he had to come from Sneets Ferry. And like I said, the response time was still good, but they still had to come from a good distance. And so if you guys could please make sure that, if it's possible for, to provide more manpower for the sheriff's office, we'd really appreciate it. And I thank you for your dedication to the county and for your time.
Okay. Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I will now close the public hearing. The item is available for Commissioners' consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, please, that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2017-2018 fiscal year budget ordinance, fee schedule, and holiday schedule, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to say that one of our budget goals was to adequately fund the emergency services. Toward that goal, we did, we have budgeted for eight new patrol deputies. Hopefully, some of those will get to your area. We've also budgeted for eight new EMTs and a new ambulance crew that's going to help us to cover the county better with our, with our rescue squads. So I think that we've, we've done the best we can do with, with funding our emergency services adequately. Carol, is it?
Yes.
I appreciate you coming up to the podium. I was kind of smiling a little bit because I think we, we met what you wanted. I think I'm very proud of this board because the, as Commissioner Bennett indicated, it was one of our priorities. And of course, our budget is limited, so we had to really dig, but we did it, and we're very proud of that. So as Commissioner Bennett said, we have funded Sheriff's Department of eight additional deputies, which I think is going to help out immeasurably, and we're very proud of that. So hopefully, you'll be happy with the budget as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll just add that in order to supply those eight emergency response EMS people and eight deputies, we had to cut our budget in other areas. We had to actually dig through it, and even the manager had reduced our budget somewhat and made it a balanced budget. But in order to fund the, the number of deputies that we were able to do, we had to actually go in and pull money from other agencies and other departments to do that because we thought that was more of a priority with our response. So it was a tough budget. It was a hard budget. We did have some additional revenue streams that came through for us that were helping us also with that. So the budget was attributed to this man right here that saved us $600,000 in, in one of the items that we were looking for, for EMS. I'm not going to go into detail about that, but he didn't have to do that, but he found it for us, and that helped us out a lot also. So thank you, Mr. Cotton, for your diligence, due diligence, and all the other staff members that helped Mr. Cotton get through this budget. And that's the way we have to do it, and that's the way we're going to try to do it from now on. So any, anything else? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting the budget ordinance for '17 and '18, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We got us a budget. I think reapportment of the tax assessor, I think that's.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about our tax assessor, Mr. Harry Smith. On October 6th of 2003, Harry Smith was appointed as our tax administrator. Since that time, he has completed all of the statutory requirements to sit as a tax administrator for Onslow County. He has served us again since 2003 uninterrupted, and every four years, he has to basically apply for the job that he, that he has. And we're at that point, his term ends June 30th of 2017. What I am respectfully recommending is that you consider reappointing Mr. Harry Smith as our tax administrator to serve as the assessor and collector for a term of four years, beginning on July 1st, 2017, and continuing through June 30th, 2021.
It's very lonely at the top for our tax collector.
Mr. Chair.
But Harry, you do a good job, sir. I appreciate you being there for us, and he's always been able to talk to the Commissioners and talk to the citizens and work things out and do the best he can, as long as we follow the guidelines of the statute, so.
Mr. Chair, I would like, it would be my honor to reappoint him as our tax collector. I would make that motion.
A second. Motion and a second. Yeah, any discussion? Any further discussion?
No.
We've got another lady that's been out there with him for a long time, Ms. Brown, sitting back there for you.
It's Brown.
She just got a, I think she just got a pen for service for.
Forty-five years?
Forty-five, going on forty-six. Thank you for your service. Thank you for keeping Harry straight. Appreciate that. Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I just have it. Ms. Angela Lee, Consolidated Agreement Amendment between the State of North Carolina and Onslow County Health Department in your new building.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Mr. Cotton. Each year, the Health Department receives funding to provide essential public health services to include environmental health, maternal and child health services, family planning, communicable disease, community, and HIV education. On March 20th of 2017, the Board of Commissioners previously authorized acceptance of the fiscal year '18 Annual Consolidated Agreement, which outlines the responsibilities of the local Health Department. The attached amendment corrects the citation of the North Carolina General Statutes and the North Carolina Administrative Code numbers as required by the state. The amendment to the consolidated agreement for fiscal year '18 has been reviewed by Mr. DeSelm's Enrum County Attorney. I respectfully request approval to accept the consolidated agreement amendment and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the Board.
It's Board's pleasure.
Move to approve the agreement.
Motion to approve the agreement. Need a second. A second by Commissioner Knapp. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I just have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Audit contract, Mr. McColl, David McColl.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. The item we have before you is a contract with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram to provide audit services for our fiscal year 1617, financial year, which is coming to a close date of 6/30/2017. It's in the amount of $55,500. It's the same amount as last year's contract. In fact, it hasn't increased over the last three fiscal years. We are, we are pleased with the services that they provide the county with the audit. They are efficient and thorough, and they always meet the statutory guidelines set forth by the LGC in getting the audit to us in a timely manner. So with that said, I respectfully request that you approve the contract that you have before you, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dave. Motion to, motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second. A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Does, does RFP go out? Did you get bids for this, or is that?
Currently, no. The, the contract amount is $55,500. I do have surrounding counties with, with similar populations. New Hanover County, which is around 216,000, a little bit larger than us, they're paying a fee of $74,000. Union County is 215,000 population, and they're paying 75,000. So I look at the surrounding areas to see what they're paying and the deal that, well, the deal, how they're able to provide the service to us in a comparable way, or if, if not cheaper. Orange County is around $88,300, their population of 140,000. Johnston County is closer to us, 180,000 population, and it's $71,000 is their fee. And then one other one that I always like to look at is Buncombe County. Again, they're a little bit bigger than us, but we're a growing county, and like, well, someday I could guess, get to that 250,000 mark. They're char, they're, they're paying $95,000 a year for their audit. So we're, we're getting a reasonable cost. They're, they're a regional firm, so they're very tech-heavy, and not that a lot of the other firms that they're contracting with the counties aren't at this point in time. But, you know, as long as they keep that around the $55,000 mark, yeah, it, it's, you know, unless you guys would like to go out to do an RFP, you know, I look at these surrounding counties, if they start coming down, then it would make sense, hey, well, if you're giving us this deal, why can't we do it? And just to toot our horn a little bit on the finance side, with our financial conversion now, with the software that we're using, we're moving towards, they want to use us as a pilot. We discussed this last year, I don't know if we are going to do it or not, having to talk to the audit manager for the job this year. But they'll do a lot of their audit, because we're pretty much electronic documents throughout our system now, that they can tap into our financial system from their office, and that cuts down costs for them, too, and that enables us to keep this fee at, at the amount that we have over the last three years. So it's a combination of them being tech-savvy and us, I think the software that we just migrated to is enabling us to do a lot more things in terms of people having access to the system, because we're not licensed anymore. It's, it's a site license. All thousand of our employees could have access to the system, where before, we were only limited to up to 200 licenses, so. To answer your question, that's just the reason why we do an RFP right now.
You're convinced we're getting the best price we can?
I think so, definitely, definitely.
Thank you.
Just for information purposes, the fire departments that we fund, it's, the auditors, it's, the bill for just a smaller agencies is like $5,000. So for an agency this big, it's proportionate-wise, it seems like it's right in line. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I just have it. Thank you, Mr. McColl. Ms. Jones? Are we going to sell some land?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Item 5D is a final offer on real property, and on May 1st, the Board accepted an offer from a citizen to purchase a parcel of land, and the parcel number is 040911. It's located on Hall Branch Road in the Richlands Township, and it's .09 of an acre in size. The offer was in the amount of $1,290, which also meets the current tax value. As required by statute, a public notice was advertised on Daily News allowing other citizens to make offset offers, but we did not receive any offset offers within that 10-day period. Therefore, the final officer, offer of $1,290 is brought back to you for final consideration. And if the Board approves the offer, the property will be sold as is, and a deed will be prepared and transferred ownership, and will remove the parcel, the asset, from the county asset pile. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the final offer in the amount of $1,290.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. A second, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I just have it. Thank you. I think you have the next one also.
Yes, sir. 5E is another final offer. On April 3rd of 2017, the Board approved a resolution authorizing the sale of the county's surplus real property by electronic auction. A notice was published in the Daily News 30 days prior to the start of the auction date, and the auction began on May 8th and ran until May 19th. North Carolina General Statute 160A-270, which describes the public auction process, requires that the highest offer that we received online be brought back to the Board for final consideration. And the county received an offer in the amount of $101 for parcel 012172, which is located on Pickett Road in the Jacksonville Township, and that tax value for that parcel is $100. If the Board approves the offer again, it'll be sold as If the Board approves the offer, again, it'll be sold as is, and a deed will be transferred, prepared, transferred in the property, and it'll be removed from the county's asset pile. It's respectfully requested that the Board consider the offer in the amount of $101. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Final offer on Section F?
Yes, this is parcel 036063, and this parcel was also a part of the electronic auction, which requires the highest offer being brought back to the Board. The county received an offer in the amount of $426 for parcel 036063. It's located on Pine Town Road in the Jacksonville Township, and the current tax value is $360. Again, if the offer is approved, a deed will be prepared, and we'll remove it from the asset file, and the property will be sold as is. It's respectfully requested that the Board consider the final high offer in the amount of $426.
Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Section G, final offer.
This is for parcel 040667 on 518 Topseal Road, also, again, part of the electronic auction. The county received an offer in the amount of $5,000 for parcel 040667, which is located at 518 Topseal Road in North Topseal Beach, and the current tax value is $5,000. It'll be sold as is, and we'll prepare a deed, transfer in the property, and it'll be removed from the asset file. It's respectfully requested that the Board consider the offer in the amount of $5,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Is this the lot that was rebid? It was underbid before, and then they come back?
Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of selling the lot as is?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Item 5H is another offer of the electronic auction. It's parcel 040946 on Sandy Drive. We received an offer in the amount of $156, and the current tax value is $100. Again, it'll be sold as is. We'll prepare a deed, transfer in the property, and remove it from the asset file. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the final high offer in the amount of $156.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
One more. Item 5I is parcel 056589 on Arabian Lane. This was also part of the electronic auction, and we received an offer in the amount of $200, and the current tax value is also $200. Again, it'll be sold as is, if approved, and we'll prepare a deed, transfer in the property, and then remove it from the county asset file. It is respectfully requested that the Board consider the final high offer in the amount of $200.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Mr. Norm Bryson. Kate B. Reynolds Charitable Trust Grant. Want to get us some money?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The Kate B. Reynolds Charitable Trust has approved Onslow County for a grant of $380,770 for a two-year period for the county to stand up and run a community paramedic program. The community paramedic program is designed to provide follow-up care to individuals with chronic illness who use the EMS system on a frequent basis. The essential objectives of this program are to improve access to mental health, reduce the need for individuals that frequently use the E911 and EMS system, reduce rate of hospital readmissions, and reduce the rate of repeat emergency room visits. Onslow County EMS, in the last two years, has performed a trial basis with a group of high-use individuals by providing them with community program services. The outcome was a 73% reduction in use of the E911 and EMS services, and an average of 58% reduction in emergency room visits. Full implementation of the program has the potential to reduce the call volume to county EMS by 300 to 500 calls a year. The grant, if accepted, will fund two full-time community paramedic positions and equipment for two years. There is no requirement for matching funds by the county, and there is no requirement for the county to continue the program after the two-year period funding by the grant. Commissioners, applying for this grant has been a two-year process. I would like to thank paramedic Chris Dudley, Cheryl Gant, and retired EMS Division Head Beth Himes for their hard work in getting the county to be considered for this grant. We respectfully request that the Board of County Commissioners consider accepting the grant from the Kate B. Reynolds Charitable Trust for the sum of $380,770 to stand up a community paramedic program, and instruct the county manager to sign the documents regarding the acceptance of the grant.
Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is it my understanding that we're doing this now with our own personnel without a grant?
We have done this on a trial basis, not as a full-time stand-up. We have been doing it as we've had individuals available and able to be able to do it, to actually test. And that test is part of what got us this grant, is by being able to provide documentation to the Kate B. Reynolds organization that it is a viable asset and would be reliable, and the funding would be well-used.
Norm, a question for you. I know we don't have to continue it after two years, but are we going to budget to make sure we keep those people? Because I hate to train two people for that and lose them.
That would be our intention, sir. We have a couple of options at that time, of course. One option would be that we could potentially apply for the grant. However, Kate B. Reynolds has traditionally been a startup program, not a sustainment program. Of course, there is the option that we would drop the program, but the third option would be for to ensure it's a sustainable and viable program and keep it operational and running.
Thank you.
And as I understand from talking to you beforehand, these two paramedics will be able to supplement our new rescue squad crew, and that'll be manned with EMTs. So if there were an emergency and we needed a paramedic, they would be able to respond also.
That is correct. They'll be working during daytime hours. They would be able to respond as well. Part of this grant also helps fund a vehicle as well for them, the program to be able to operate. So they would be able to respond to calls when they're not tied up doing work in the community paramedic program.
There's obviously no cost to us, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's a win-win for the county. Saves us money, gives us additional manpower, and it's a good thing for the community. So I make a motion to accept.
A motion, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think we already had it, but that's all right. You make all of them you want.
Go ahead.
I make a double motion then.[1088.88][1088.91](Laughter).
I'm the one usually messing that up.
I mean, this is a great opportunity. Not only is it good for the county, but, I mean, not only is it not county taxpayer dollars, but it's not any taxpayer dollars. This is a private foundation that's providing this. So, I mean, that's an awesome opportunity, so looking forward to voting for it.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, Norm. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Board of Adjustment.
The Onslow County Board of Adjustments is governed by the terms of the Onslow County Zoning Ordinances and the North Carolina General Statute 153A, Tech. 345. All members of the Board shall thoroughly familiarize themselves with these laws and ordinances. Currently, there is one vacant seat in the at-large alternate category. Ms. Amy Buchanan and Ms. Sue McLaughlin have expressed an interest in this categorical seat and have submitted citizen participation applications for consideration. Staff has prepared a ballot for the Board's convenience. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The vacancy has been advertised. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office.
And to clarify, Amy Buchanan is no relation to the Commissioner Buchanan.
Right. We've got ballots, so we're going to...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Board has selected Ms. Amy Buchanan.
Okay, thank you. Alcohol Beverage Control Board.
Excuse me. The Onslow County Alcoholic Beverage Control Board is comprised of five members... Correction, five board members appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. Board members are appointed to serve on the Onslow County ABC Board for a term of three years and can serve for three consecutive terms. The Onslow County ABC Board employs a full-time system administrator who oversees the daily operations of the ABC system in Onslow County. The Onslow County ABC Board provides oversight related to the operations of the six ABC stores in Onslow County. Dr. Dante Martin's term will expire on June 30th, 2017. Staff have reached out to the ABC Board staff and have not received an application from Dr. Martin for consideration. Mr. Gary Dixon has expressed an interest in serving on the Board and has provided a citizen participation application for consideration. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. This vacancy has been advertised. The application is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. In addition, the Board of Commissioners is responsible for appointing the Chairman of the ABC Board annually. Ms. Carol McIntyre is serving as the Chairman of the ABC Board for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2017. The action requested is consider the appointment of Mr. Gary Dixon for a three-year term expiring on June 30th, 2020, and to appoint Mr. Gary Dixon as Chairman of the ABC Board for a one-year term expiring on June 30th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Thank you. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety partners with the Juvenile Crime Prevention Councils in each county to galvanize community leaders, local and statewide, to reduce and prevent juvenile crime. JCPC Board members are appointed by the County Board of Commissioners and meet monthly in each county. Each JCPC has a responsibility to review the needs of juveniles in the county who are at risk of delinquency, or who have been adjudicated, undisciplined, or delinquent. Prioritize community risk factors, determine the services needed to address those problem areas, develop and request for proposals for services in need, increase public awareness of the causes of delinquency and strategies to reduce the problem, and develop strategies to intervene, respond to, and treat the needs of juveniles at risk of delinquency. The following individuals have expressed an interest in appointment and have provided citizen participation applications. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. Mr. Wendell Boykins, it would be the Chief Court Counselor category for a term expiring June 30th, 2018. And I apologize, I'm going to butcher this name. Mr. O.G. Boobo is under the age-of-18 category with the same term expiring June 30th of 2018. And William L. Ross III for Commissioners Appointee category, expiring June 30th, 2018. It's respectfully requested appointment of the listed individuals and the specific terms and categories.
Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
I'm just glad I didn't have to say that name.
I'm almost struggling myself with it. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Richlands Planning Board, PTJ category, I think Ms. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town of Richlands has requested the Board of Commissioners to consider Mr. Anthony Barr and Mr. Robert Daniel Gray to continue serving as the extraterritorial jurisdiction representatives on the Richlands Planning Board. Both have submitted a citizen participation application. No other citizens have expressed an interest in serving on the Board at this time. All applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It is requested that the Commissioners consider the reappointment of Mr. Anthony Barr and Mr. Robert Daniel Gray for three-year terms to expire on June 19th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Motion to approve and second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Richlands Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, the town of Richlands has requested the Board of Commissioners to consider Mr. Anthony Barr and Mr. Robert Daniel Gray to continue serving as the extraterritorial jurisdiction representatives on the Richlands Board of Adjustment. Both have submitted citizen participation applications. No other citizens have expressed an interest in serving at this time. All applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It is respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the reappointment of Mr. Anthony Barr and Mr. Robert Daniel Gray for three-year terms expiring on June 19th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Motion to approve and second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. Consent agenda, there was nothing removed from the consent agenda, so we don't have anything for Item 7. Item 8 is Public Comment section. Again, Ms. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Three individuals have signed up this evening. The first is Marcy M. Wright of Two West Bayshore Boulevard. Ms. Wright, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes? Three minutes, sorry.
Five minutes, Marcia. Five.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Marcia Wright, and I reside at Two West Bayshore Boulevard here in Jacksonville. And I'm here in my capacity as Board Chairperson for Eastern Carolina Human Services. I decided not to comment on at the time you considered the budget, but to do it now, just in more general terms, I chose this particular time of the agenda. We did apply during your last budget cycle for assistance, but we're not able to receive any, and we certainly, while we could certainly use any funding we can get from any source, we do appreciate, and I certainly do, you know, have a personal awareness of the fact that you do have to make hard decisions about your budget, including cutting and managing a lot of competing interests. I'm sure there were many more people here, may still be some here, who were also doing the same thing and did not get consideration during this time. There, however, are two things I did want to point out to you, or just to bring to your attention, since we have three of you that are new to the Board, and also have members that are returning, but may not be aware of some of the things that we're doing. I wanted to point out, number one, our Community Services Block Grant Program, or CSBG Program. That is the core of community action. That was the activity or the program that began this program in 1965 under President Johnson. And this program has been going on since then. I've been involved with this agency for right around 36 years or so, since 1980 in one capacity or another. And I've served on the Planning Committee that we have that oversees that particular program and how we receive our data and information to manage that program. The purpose of that program is to bring people out of poverty permanently, and we've been very successful in working on that for the past three decades. But we recently brought in a program manager, Ms. Lakita Lassane, who has really taken this program to a whole other level. As I said, I've been on the Planning Committee for a long time, and I really have never seen a program that she has, that anyone has put together like this. So we'll be calling upon you all, hopefully in the near future, and we'll be in touch with your county manager to see if we cannot organize some type of a brief, I guess I'd say retreat, for lack of a better word, or information session. We serve a four-county area, Onslow, Pender, Duplin, and New Hanover now is our newest county. And our Board is made up of representatives from three areas, public sector, those community services who just do work in the general community. services who just do work in the general community, the poverty part of our community, and the third is our elected officials. So you all do have members on our Board of Directors that represent your interests and in turn need to be bringing information back to you. So we will make sure that that is stepped up so that you will know what we're involved in on a regular basis. And the other Commissioners have agreed to come if you will host a workshop like this. So we would like to put together something, talk to you about putting something together so that you can see the data assessments we've done, also to see what we have done in the way of a community assessment. I know that most elected officials these days are very concerned about data-driven issues, so we want to show you how we're doing this, how we're collecting data. And considering the things that are going on with the federal government, you all may be looking at some serious increases in issues that we will have to deal with in your community here if they come to fruition. And you'll need to have an organization that is working with you to try to meet the needs of those people in the community. Our second one is our NC Serves Coastal Program that you I'm sure are aware of. That is a program that serves veterans, and it is a third project in North Carolina. The first was around the Fayetteville, Fort Bragg area, there's one in Charlotte, and the one here in Jacksonville. We serve a 20-county area. We've been here since November the 20th of last year. And we've done so well with this project that the person who directs our local project, Mr. Jarek Vernon, was asked to sit on the selection committee for a fourth project in Asheville. So I would say that we're doing pretty well since we've been around for about six months to be asked to help to select the new program coming out. We believe that our veterans deserve the best we can give them, and we want to work again with you to make a difference in the community. Thirdly, I would point out that I think we're in good position to do this work that we have to do. Our local Executive Director of Eastern Carolina Human Services, Ms. Daphne Hill, was recently inducted into the North Carolina Community Action Association Hall of Fame. And that's an honor that she's very proud of, we are too. And so we'll be calling upon you all to help us, help the citizens of Jacksonville, people who are in poverty, and particularly our veterans, to do as well as we can for their benefit. And any help that we can be to you, we will be right here for you to call upon us any time we can. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the next person who has signed up is Mr. David Harris of 188 Deer Road in Hubert. Mr. Harris, you have a, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening. My name is David Harris. I live at 188 Deer Road in Hubert. This is the third time in the last 12 months I've come here to address you. Much of the reason I'm here today is the same reason I was here before. But I'd like to actually talk just a little bit about some background here so you'll understand my way of thinking a little better. I work in the nuclear industry and have for almost 40 years, came out of the Nuclear Navy. Okay? Our industry demands 80% accuracy when you take exams minimum in order to pass. Mistakes are not tolerated, they can't be tolerated because it involves public safety. I believe in honesty and integrity. And I believe not in political correctness, but in correctness. You can be politically correct all day and not tell the truth, and you're not doing your job. And that's the problem I have with a lot of Flower County. Over the last four and a half years, I've been dealing with multiple problems in our community involving drug dealing, drug manufacturing, theft, illegal motorcycle repair facilities using our highways as test tracks. Okay? Arson, and quite a number of other issues. While dealing with these, I've dealt with the Sheriff's Department, the Emergency Service Department, Clerk of Court, Judge and District Attorney, schools and superintendent, there are land use, planning, development, zoning, and permits departments, animal services, the County Commissioners, and environmental resources. Well, when I started doing this four and a half years ago, when I walked into a department and started talking to people, usually 50% of the answers I got were incorrect. They didn't know the answers to their own departments. In some cases, when I asked for answers from our County Commissioners, I got incorrect information there. Now, I know a lot of you can't memorize everything, but we have a lot of issues in our county, I'll say it nicely. The most disturbing part of my dealing with the county officials here, though, has been in the various departments when they promise action, less than percent, 60% of them deliver. Now, I know some of you have run businesses or do run businesses. Just think of a customer coming into your store, ordering something, giving you the credit card information, everything else, and your clerk, once he walks outdoors, says, "I think that's too much trouble, I'm not going to bother the owner." That's pretty much what you've got here. We are the customers. We are paying the bill. We're not getting the services. I mean, how else to say that? It's honest. We have issues with lack of coordination and cooperation amongst our departments. That's very notable. One place you'll see it is our county GIS system. It's a really nice instrument. It has the capability of doing a lot of good things, but a lot of our information is incorrect. We also have a third-party vendor for it who's supplying maps that are 30 years out of date. That's a fact. And the GIS coordinator cannot get it fixed. They won't talk to her. We need to find out why. I mean, we're, we're cutting our own throats by accepting this kind of behavior. We have a lack of due diligence by some of our department directors and by the subordinates below them. The bright spots I've seen over the last couple of years, our Sheriff's Office has improved dramatically. I believe that we have a very good department going now, and I was very happy to hear you guys gave them extra resources. My only question is how much we're going to tie up in our county courthouse? We seem to be tying up a substantial amount of our resources for our Sheriff's Department and our jail and county courthouse. Emergency Services, Norman Bryson has done an excellent job as far as I'm concerned, straightening out some of the issues that we found in his department. I think he's done a fine job. He's a good man. Zoning and ordinance rewrites, Ben Warren, I've been working with him a little bit over the last nine months. Nice man. Very smart. I think he's going to do a good job. He's got a hard uphill battle, though. Unfortunately, our County Commissioners have sat and allowed ordinances and statutes to exist that were unenforceable for way too long. Currently, we can't enforce a lot of our zoning statutes. I know they're under rewrite, but they've been under rewrite for nine months. We need to start seeing some results, please. Is that the end of my time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the last person who has signed up this evening is Sheriff Hans Miller. Sheriff?
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. I want to take this opportunity to provide some feedback to the Board of Commissioners in reference to our budget cycle. Every budget cycle is something that we take very seriously because, as conservatives, we don't want to spend any additional money that we don't need to spend. I would like to commend our new County Manager, David Cotton, for, and his staff, for working with my staff to provide the needs, the needs that we want and that we need. Not the wants, the ones we defer, but the needs, because we listen to the people of Onslow County. And when we hear what the needs are, then we want to provide those needs to the best of our ability. When it comes to response times, about a year and a half, two years ago, we created patrol zones for one purpose, and that is to reduce the response times because we don't want to have an officer respond from one zone, maybe Richlands, all the way down to Hubert where they're needed. So we spread our officers out in their zones, and that makes the officers become more familiar with their zones because they know where to go immediately, and they get to know the area, the area gets to know the officers. But also, there is always a negative. When that officer is taking a call from a citizen, we don't rush through it. So when in that same area, another call for service comes in, sometimes we have to dispatch another officer from an adjoining zone, and that does take a little bit of time. Having said all that, I would like to thank this Board, because what I see, I see professionals, I see public servants that see what we have seen for many years, that our growing county does require additional service. And I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for providing that service to us and for citizens of Onslow County, North Carolina. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Cotton. Please let your staff know, we thank them for it.
Thank you, Sheriff. We've had some, a couple of speakers that had brought up some interesting points, and some of the points that was brought up concerns planning and our code enforcement. So I would like Mr. Warren to come up and maybe state some of Mr. Harris's concerns and what we have done, actually done and can do with the resources we have, if you could, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, one thing, excuse me, that Mr. Harris alluded to was, you know, the condition of some of our ordinances. And that's something that, and the Board approved last year, was the rewrite of our zoning and subdivision ordinances and some updates to our solid waste ordinance. So we are right in the middle of that process. We have a consultant that's helping us get through that, and we're probably, probably about 75% of the way through those rewrites. So sometime this summer or early fall, we should be at a draft completion to be able to provide that to the Board for review and hopefully have those in place by, by this fall. And certainly with that, you know, there's a couple of different things that we want to address to make sure that everything is statutorily or in line with the statutes, but also gives us additional mechanisms to, to be able to accurately and sufficiently address violations as they occur. Probably the biggest challenge we have with some of our ordinances is just not enough teeth to really address some of the chronic violators that we have in the, in the county. And so that's been one of the charges we've, we've worked with, with our consultant, is identifying mechanisms that we can to, to be able to enforce the ordinances. We've also looked for other ways to be able to collect. If we have liens on property or whatever it might be, so we're not putting additional burdens on taxpayers, provide resources to be able to fund cleanups of properties and those things. And so we're looking for other resources, other mechanisms to be able to carry out some of these functions. So we are, we're actively pursuing these, these opportunities. In Mr. Harris's case in particular, there were a list of properties and violations that he brought to our attention, and we're actively working through those. Some of those have already been addressed. Some of those, we have bids out right now to get contracts to clean some of those properties, some of those we have on the list for the upcoming budget year because we just didn't have the funds available in this budget year. So we're actively pursuing those, but the biggest hamstring that we have is just the condition of our ordinances and, and funding. And so we're looking for mechanisms to be able to address both of those issues.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Warren? Thank you, Mr. Warren. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cotton, our newly appointed County Manager, congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
And it's your turn now to be in the spotlight and give us your comments.
I, I will be brief. That's one of my hallmarks so far. I, I do want to publicly thank the, the Board for your vote of confidence. It, it's a tremendous honor to serve as the County Manager, and it's, it's definitely my distinct honor to, to have won your confidence. And I will strive every day to, to reaffirm your, your vote of confidence in me. And I do want to thank the Commissioners publicly for the budget process, your patience, your time, and more specifically, your, your guidance. I've, I've been in this profession 20 years, and just speaking from a manager's perspective, where I've been a manager, this budget process, although challenging, was, it was a very clear direction, and, and I appreciate that. And on behalf of my staff, we, we appreciate that. There was no ambiguity for what our goals and objectives were, and that, that means a lot, that leadership begins and, and ends with you. And again, on behalf of my staff, I, I genuinely appreciate that. And I do want to recognize our, our staff as well for all the hard hours and time that they put into that. From the, you know, 28 departments, the 20-plus outside agencies that, that we consider funding, they put in a tremendous amount of time. My budget team really put in a lot of long hours to, to put everything together and, and present it to you, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Buchanan.
Where do you start? David, thank you, and the staff, you worked hard. And I don't know if the, the public knows it, but I believe you started in January when we started with the budget, pretty much getting things started, zero-based budgeting. You've worked hard, the staff has worked hard. We had two functions last week with Sherri Slater and Angela Lee and Heidi Bauer with our new facility. I'm so proud of that facility because I, I shared it that day in the, when I talked to the, the press and whatnot about, you know, I was there the Saturday they were moving in, I've never seen so much excitement from our employees. And you've heard me talk about it before with, with Betty Brown, when they all came over here to this new building, they were all looking out the window. I use it all the time. And they seen me coming up behind them, and they all took off like a cubby of quail. And I said, "You don't have to go anyplace, you haven't had a window in how many years?" I think that old tax office has never had windows in it that I can remember. It's just outstanding to watch our employees with new facilities, and we're saving over $400,000 in rent. Place it doesn't leak, it's just an outstanding. And the Discovery Guards was real well. They gave us some little trophies the other day, and maybe Commissioner Knapp will share his with you. This is a good Board. I have enjoyed working with this Board, and you've heard me say it before, it's the best Board I've worked with in the last 13 years. It is amazing. We work together, we talk together, we hash things out. If we don't agree on something, we move on. It's just amazing to work with this Board. It's, it's really rewarding to come to our meetings and to our workshops, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank everybody for being here and thank all of our employees for what they do for this county. Thank you, Commissioner. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Price.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening, who participated in the, in the public comment period and gave us some feedback. Next thing, just wanted to cite that exams start tomorrow and, for those students, and congratulate the Onslow County graduates coming up that'll be graduating next week and across the county. About the budgeting process, there's several things there that I'm proud of. We have five goals that we started out with. One was no tax increase. So this budget does not have a tax increase. We also wanted to come up with a way of trying to address the mental health crisis. And so we're working on that. That's a work in progress. We're not there yet, but we have a goal date set, you know, we're shooting for. So we're working on that. We wanted to address public safety. We wanted to address issues with EMS, first responders, public safety. We were able to do that, you know, with eight patrol officers, with a new ambulance and the crew to put out there. Also, we were able to increase the pay of county employees, you know, 2.7% increase in pay for county employees, which they're deserving of that. A lot of dedicated folks who work pretty hard. So all of those things I'm proud of. And, you, that's not easy decisions, as we were saying earlier, some folks were saying it wasn't easy. I do want to let you know that we did not add any new nonprofits for consideration. As a matter of fact, those were some areas that we had to look into making some adjustments on, and those weren't easy decisions. Those, a lot of nonprofits do a lot of great things, and those weren't easy decisions, and, and they were taken extremely seriously. And I just wanted to let you know that, and, and thank you for your participation this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Commissioner Knapp.
I've got a couple of things I just want to say. First and foremost, I just want to say congratulations to David. This is his first official meeting as County Manager. And if you didn't watch him during the budget process, which I'm sure many of you haven't, he was phenomenal. And I appreciate everything you did and everything that, bearing with us and staying within the confines of our goals. And I want to kind of address that, but first I want to address what you said, Mr. Harris. I really appreciate you coming up here and talking with us and expressing your concern. But I do want to say one thing. You mentioned due diligence and things like that, and I just want to say I'm very proud of our county employees. Now, when you say Board of Commissioners, we're a new Board, so I just ask that you give us a chance. Okay? Because I haven't received an email from you, and you're more than willing to email me directly, and we can discuss these issues. me directly, and we can discuss these issues, because I do believe our county employees do give due diligence. I've been around them for five months, 29-year veteran of the government service, and this is probably the best government I worked for thus far. So I'd be more than happy to discuss some issues with you. But then again, I think this board is making some giant steps moving forward, especially in our attitude, so I just ask that you give us a chance, and maybe we can prove you wrong and change your opinion of us, so, but I do appreciate you coming up here. The budget process, I got to tell you, I got to echo what Commissioner Buchanan said, okay? This was a thing that we campaigned on, and all of us actually campaigned on focusing in on the needs and not the wants of this county. Okay? We knew that we'd have to make some hard decisions, and we knew that we had to fund those agencies and those programs that we identified in our top five priority, and I think we did it. Not only did we do it, we did it without a tax increase, with a 2.7% COLA increase for all the county employees. So I think across the board, we did pretty good, and I'm very proud of that. And I'm proud of the fact that when we were in the budget process, Commissioner Buchanan and Commissioner Bennett, I remember I'm sitting next to them, and they had their sleeves rolled up, and they were basically going line by line. And we were all discussing it with the chairman, so we took it seriously. And so it's a real proud moment for me as a commissioner, that we did what we set out to do for the people, not for us, for any other goal other than to meet the priorities and the needs of this county, and I think we did that. And I want to publicly thank the sheriff for stepping up and thanking us, that meant a lot, I appreciate that, Sheriff. We've had discussions before, and we know how important it is that you need to have the proper manpower and the proper equipment to do your job, so I really appreciate you stepping forward, so. And I'm happy about that, I'm also happy, too, because my son came home after being gone for three years in Thailand, so I'm very, very happy, and I'm itching to get out of here so we can adjourn pretty quick. But I want to say something about Commissioner, Chairman Bright. I didn't have time to do what I wanted to do, but it had something to do with short and stout, this is my handle, this is my spout. But apparently he went to a ceremony, and he said that they found an appropriate-sized, what is this? Teapot. It's not a teapot, they found an appropriate-sized...
Watering can.
What is it? What is it?
Water.
A watering can for me. And I kind of looked at it, and he's probably right, because it fits perfectly in my hand, so. But I do promise to have something very special for the chairman in the next meeting, so it might include a moon pie as well. But I want to thank everybody for coming out, and I want to thank all the leaders here in the county for the great job. Again, Mr. Harris, thank you for your honesty, I appreciate that, sir, and to you as well, Sheriff. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Bennett.
Thank you, Chairman. I also have to congratulate David Cotton, I really appreciate you being there and able to take the reins as county commissioner, I'm looking forward to working with you for a long time, and I know you're going to do a great job for Onslow County, thank you. This is, in fact, our six-month anniversary today, we were sworn in December the 5th, so this is our six-month anniversary. We have, you know, I have learned a lot in six months, I still have a whole lot more to learn. This budget process has been new, and it's been challenging, and we worked hard on it. I've been honored by having to be at a lot of different functions and represent Onslow County. Just as was mentioned earlier recently, the ribbon-cutting for the Consolidated Human Services Building and for the Discovery Gardens were excellent opportunities to represent Onslow County. I think there are many great things that are happening in Onslow County. I wanted to address Ms. Wright, I thank you for being here, I'm very interested in learning more about what your organization is doing. I've spoken many times about nonprofits, I am absolutely in favor of nonprofits, not sure that I'm in favor of how we fund nonprofits, and that's going to be something that we're going to have to talk about more in the next year, I hope. I think there needs to be more accountability in the money that we give to nonprofit organizations, and I hope we can work on that over the next year. Mr. Harris, I appreciate your comments. I'd have you know that dilapidated buildings and zoning violations have been on my mind since we started this thing six months ago. I've had regular discussions with Mr. Warren and with the county attorney about ways that we can improve our ordinances to put some teeth in them and be able to take care of some of these situations, I hear about it a lot. In my business, I use the GIS almost every day, I'm not sure what issues you have with the GIS, but I'd love to talk to you about it, if you'd like to talk to me sometime. I think we have a very good, efficient GIS system. Like I said, I use it almost every day. And I also want to thank the sheriff for your comments. The budget, again, was a challenge for us newbies, and we still have a lot to learn. So, I want to thank everybody for being here, I appreciate all of your support, and we just assure you that, I think I speak for all of us when I say that we're going to do everything we can to do our best for the citizens of Onslow County. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll try to be brief. We have, Mr. Harris has talked, he's come in August of last year, he was here, I think, in January of this year, and of course he's back here today, but we have all types of deplorable people that like to live in deplorable situations. And by the time you fix one, another one pops up somewhere else, and there's homes, and there's dilapidated houses, and not one county in the state of North Carolina addresses dilapidated structures. Now, cities do, because they're smaller and confined geographic areas, but counties do not. I was coming from Greenville about a couple of months ago, and from Greenville city limits to Vanceboro, North Carolina, on Highway 43, you can go and count them yourself, I counted like 300 structures that was fit in the category where Mr. Harris was talking about. Onslow County is no different. If we were to tear those structures down, our landfill would be full, we wouldn't have anywhere to haul our trash. So there's got to be another way to do it, another way to address it, and I don't know exactly how that's going to happen, but Ben has done an extremely good job in my book for doing the best you can with what we have with the ordinances, and I applaud you for working on the ordinances, and I know that things just can't happen overnight when we have a problem, and I guess it has to go through legal before we have to vote or approve any ordinances, and that's another whole situation when you're doing ordinances, it has to be an unanimous vote to start with, and then it has to go through a process on an ordinance. So that's, has to make sure it meets all the legal challenges when you do that. You've got Onslow County being one of the biggest farming communities that's ever been, and it's changing now, but all up and down the highways and roads and streets and rural area, you see tobacco barns, packhouses, and old farm structures that's in dilapidated situations, and I don't know if the county would ever have enough money to address that. But that's something we'll work on, and Mr. Harris, I know your situation, but it's not just your area where you're looking at, it's everywhere. So we're looking forward to try to address some of those issues. I'd like to congratulate all the board appointments we made tonight, we made several board appointments. We also got some property put back on the tax books that we sold tonight, thanks to Laura Jones and the asset department for moving us forward with that. Congratulations again, Mr. Cotton, for your position and doing the job you did with this budget. And other than that, have a good evening and have a safe trip home. The entertaining motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Sir.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.